Have to leave it on there.
Yes, you do. I don't know. Don't take them off. They're beautiful, beautiful. Um, and, um, you know, work, uh, in terms of between the meetings, um, going on nicely. Um, Anna and team continue to absolutely kill it when it comes to getting interpretations for to be approved policy. So she's taken some risks and going with what's there. Um, but calculated risk. So I'm, I'm good with it because if she and her team are ready to basically pull the trigger, the same time all of you are on ends and yells. And this is something that I need to be able to monitor. And that's just, it's just, it's like climbing two mountains at the same time. So kudos to Anne for and I had to really warp on that. Um, also been doing a lot of work in interim on the procedural guide. I think I've seen two revisions of it.
Yeah, I think finally we just sent over the last little edits.
Okay.
Yeah, let me forget to send those with everyone tonight.
So that's looking nice and, um, and appropriate for what you need in that book. Uh, there's, uh, there was at the last go around still some, um, cross referencing that needs to happen to make it easier for all of you to go, oh, if I'm looking at this policy and I see a cross reference here, I go there. But likewise, back in the other direction, if you're in the procedural guide and you want to know what policy it connects to, we're putting those in too. So really a lot of work to make that a functioning, usable, helpful document. So pleased with that. Uh, so bottom line is a lot of stuff going on behind the scenes in between your meetings. But that brings us to today's meeting, the July eighth meeting here, and we have two tasks on that still keep us on track. And that is to file the ELS, the executive limitations quadrant, and to finalize ends policies. That's a good list for tonight. And so I need all of your help keeping us as expedited as we can through this process. Of course, without sacrificing where, where there, we feel like there needs to be some more conversation. So help me strike that balance. I don't think anybody wants to stay here until midnight tonight. Um, so there's work to do. Uh, and then I, I don't think, um, if you could scroll down, let's just, and Anna, I think you may be closer to the details on this, but I'll give it a try and you.
Yeah.
Check it. Okay. So, um, the goal is for sometime in July, August, to do those three things listed here. Complete, uh, review of the binder items for edits. You've got the binders. I don't know the binders. I don't need to be involved.
Yeah, I hope we talked about, you know, does working with me make maybe more sense come January? We're gonna have two new council members and no offense Alex and Jill, but like at that point, they're getting to working with us. Not as relevant as it is right now. And so it might make sense. Yeah, sorry about that. And I think some certainly make an adjustment at that point. And so.
All right. We could bring them back, the two of them, you know, for their insight some night.
Yeah.
You know, now this is more than I want to do. They come back.
At that point, it's volunteer though. You don't get that.
Yeah, you don't get that nobody's side of it. Yeah.
Bring your own food too. Drink the big lunch.
Um, but the case study, I, I, I think there's a lot of value to that. And I'd love to have you two hear from that conversation as well, because it's just such a risk, risk. Which case study on your perspective is going to be helpful or the group that stays on continues going. So don't want to lose those voices. Uh, in between, I won't go into those details. And then activate right now, Anna, you're thinking of activation in October. Is that what I'm seeing?
I think it'll depend on how the rest of this goes, but I'm kind of goal of having like a couple of months living in this before the new council members. But also I was strategically trying to avoid budget season. Like I want us to be able to focus on the budget and not have to also be approving this at the same time in budget, which is going to be the Aug- August, September timeframe. And so.
So will that force this group to be operating quite clearly with their feet in the old world of budgeting approval? And not the new world of approving a budget. You, you know, of course, because you've all done your homework and looked at those executive limitations related to planning, budgeting, that approving the budget is attached to accepting that monitoring report for planning, budgeting as a reasonable interpretation and the data demonstrates compliance. The data being the draft budget. So you're going to be operating in the old way of doing things this time around. And that's going to feel kind of weird because your heads are in some of these new processes. Are you okay with that?
Well, I think that was part of the conversation. Our last workshop was, hey, there's going to be three of us that are going to need to carry this forward. And the three of us pivot our minds and in, in making the shift. I think prior to that, we had expect, there was expectation, at least for myself, that we may not have two new council members, that the five of us would carry it forward. Um, and so there's two new council members coming in that may not know anything different, right? Like this model is what they're going to come into. Um.
Which is why I gave that track record of a couple of months of practice under your belts. I think that was also was decided by both last time.
Yep. And so I think all, all to be said is that we should carry forward in our current model through the budgeting cycle. And I think once budgeting is approved, then, I mean, the tail end of our, of our calendar year is always just kind of slow. There's not, usually there's not building permits or planner reviews, those types of things. Um, but to me, if we're going to flip it, honestly, uh, late November, early December makes more sense than a January first.
Well.
But also makes more sense, November, December makes more sense than a September to me.
Yeah. And I think honestly, from a staff perspective, I think knowing that we're going to have two new council members in, in January, it was, we just thought through like, hey, let's finish the budget with our current process. Cause that's what we all understand and know.
Okay.
And then make the shift just because then by the time we get to the budget process next year, I think we're all going to feel a lot more confident about this instead of us kicking off the activation of this with the first thing being budgeting, which seems a little intense and intimidating. Now we can kick it off to Ryan's point where it's a little bit quieter around here. Things kind of calm down a little bit. We can focus more solely on this. And so I, knowing where we were in the process, I'm trying to not rush us. I'm just hearing the voices of everybody collectively at the last one. It felt like that was a really good, like happy medium between, hey, let's, we're not going to push this out till January, but we're not going to kick it off in July. Let's get through the budget. And then the last quarter of this year, we can be focusing on activation, which tends to be a slower, slower time.
Is that letting one with all of you? Jill?
I mean, I, I think it's whatever staff thinks is going to make their jobs easier. I guess my only concern, if I really find to be sitting here in a year would be you're going to have two council members kind of adapting at the same time you guys are. And, um, I just think that there's margin for, um, it to get further stalled because there's a lot of catching up that the new council members seem to go through themselves. Um, that would be my only concern.
I definitely see in this process, budget's probably going to be our friction point. For me personally, um, because I'm used to us getting a very detailed budget and talking through, I mean, similar to tonight, like, hey, is there a way we can scrape together a little bit more funds so we can fix that intersection that we always talk about or hear about, right? That's changing. And so I guess maybe a little bit to Anna's point, I don't know that I want in this new model, our first friction between staff and council.
It's the budget.
It should be the budget and having it stalled. Um, through, and, and also during an election, like it just feels like a recipe for disaster. Jed, first quarter usually feels like, hey, we can get into this. We can get used, three of us can get more user, used to it, comfortable with it. By budget season next year, I think we're into it.
I, I would agree. I think that I like the idea of we've gotten into it so far that to execute it, to delay it to January, it feels like it's going to fall in the back burner immediately. And start to lose a little bit of the, and I think we bring in some asset, three of us will bring some assets to the table when the new people are training in. We can kind of explain it, you know, help Jed obviously, you've got some experience in it and, and helped us immensely. So hopefully we can do the same with the two.
Okay. All right. Has everybody been heard and shared their concerns? I think the conundrums is, okay.
Sorry. So it's funny, right?
It makes sense from a staff perspective, personal concerns, and hold those close moving forward. All right. Um, okay. So two bodies of work, ends, which we really haven't touched at all.
We've only seen the first draft. That's it.
Yeah. Uh, and executive limitations. Raise your hand if you want to do ELS first. Want to do ELS first or you want to do ends first? Or I've got one for ends.
No.
You are the only person so far saying you want to do ends right now. Everybody else is done. You've been into executive limitations. Is that what I'm seeing?
I would say.
He had the only unpaid. It's not fun doing that.
The ELS, we are the, we've had like a couple of versions of. So we're probably the closest to be able to check. But the ends, I think are going to take us a little bit longer. So we should maybe.
All right.
You got it. ELS up.
My eye open.
Let's do executive limitations.
A new repulse.
I am going to move down to the end of the table. So I don't like having to have it in time, time at the same time. So I'm going to shift down. Um. Executive limitations. Um.
You want me to do like last time? I'm kind of scrolling till you guys follow up points that you want.
Right, didn't it?
I know Rob has some comments in here too, along the way. I think we'll kind of stop on those, but you guys just tell me where to stop. I'll let you on it. It's a creative purchase. It did print off copies for everyone. If that easier.
Yeah.
You want one?
Big hit material.
Yeah.
Remember hitting for your reminders tonight?
Yeah, there's my office.
Wait, Tim, you're already like.
You've been really studying it.
I have.
He called me today and was like, I'm not sure if I can get it back to you to redo it. I've been enjoying this long.
I don't know how to pause it by night.
Um, there's forks and knuckles somewhere.
Oh, did you wrap it? First time we use the passive work.
Oh, we got it.
Okay. So treatment of residents and customers are slowly scrolling on by. Speak now or for all of them, please. Little bit easier. This one gets a little more. Treatment staff, two point two. Right, comparable. Oh, this is your.
Okay. Yeah. And I do, should I help you on this? I can't remember. Cause I put this comment here and then I added it later and was like, oh, I think it maybe belongs later in the document, but we were having some sort of a, wasn't that staff have to do a disclosure? Is that what we were talking about at our last training that if we're going to do conflict of interest disclosures, do we require a staff and of council? I don't remember what my comment is about. I don't.
Why would staff need to?
These L ELS are not directed at the board. You all know that, right? So executive limitations are, is the board speaking to staff.
I have this comment in there twice and I cannot remember.
Yeah, you've been there twice. Okay, where does it go?
Where does it go? But I can't remember what it was about. It was something we talked about.
Last time we talked about, uh, yes, having, I think there's a couple of different examples of, um, staff signing off on a, on a compliance document. What do, what was that called?
Well, we were talking about, uh, we were talking about it in, in respect to like having a, you know, not even relationship, but like if you with consultants or with, you know, like if there would be a conflict of interest with somebody that you're working with, that potential could be getting contracts that.
We review that yearly or was it, I think there was some time when, how many times do we actually go back and check?
Is it in your personnel policy? Like your.
Yeah. Yeah, it's in there, but you, I mean, you could put in here so that I'm required to keep it in there essentially, you know, like I'm not allowed to operate with the outer personnel policy that has.
Yep. And that's a couple of those are also, also in there.
Um, so maybe we have to cover.
The way it's stated right now, I think.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
If I'm hearing it right, it's just fine. So you could delete that comment.
Okay.
Need to provide better. Okay. Remember we're in treatment of staff. Is there anything else anybody wanted to flag for conversation?
Two point two, point three, or two point, two point, two point three, employee grievance. Um, I think that makes sense. It all rolls up to Anna. My question would be, and, and it should all be resolved there and under. But when, if and when there's a grievance on our one employee, it can't go to Anna, right? Like if there's a grievance upon the board's one of the admin, it can't go to the admin for resolution. Just like she would be the escalation point. So I feel like we need to have an escalation point in here.
So do you have language for us, an additional sentence that could be tagged on to the end?
Like the, um, the person who would, um, backline in your absence.
Well, no, it's really, oh, yeah, you could use the whoever's the emergency. In the center or something.
Yeah. In the event that there's a conflict with administrator.
There's a grievance.
Employees may go to the acting administrator as defined by.
That's an interesting idea because you are also required to make sure that that person is to fill in for you. So they'd have to have some familiarity with the process. So, excuse me.
I, I like that from keeping it in the stack in a level. I think that person then also needs like an outlet on this.
It's meaningful, yeah.
It's like, are they going to be uncomfortable bringing it forward because it's on their boss? Right? It's almost like, I know some of these, like I know in some of the linkage documents, we have like, hey, if anybody's out of line, you're going to have to report. And as Anna, you have to report if I'm on a line on this or like you're required. So having language in there that helps them to say, not only do you have to, you like, you have to bring it forward and without concern. Um, if you do direct it to another staff, right? Cause that's an uncomfortable position to put another staff.
Well, that's going to report direct to you. Is it going to have to deal with the grievance?
Or they're going to go to their peer who's the succession. So I like keeping it staff, but it would be nice to have like a bullet there that says that person needs to.
The one committee we have is the governance committee. And could that second be part of that committee? Right?
Just go to the whole council. I mean, they would operate like you would to counsel. Right? I mean.
Does that make it public impression?
You, if it's, if it's employment related or personnel related, you'd have a closed meeting to discuss it. First time I think how to write it. It allows grievance towards the administrator to be unreported to the city council through the.
Negative. You're getting.
I know. And I'm. Through the emergency succession.
Designator, um, designated, oh, I see succession.
Yeah.
Or emergency succession designee. And you could cite that policy number. That makes sense, everyone?
It does. And I think it's good for all of us to understand a like, let's play this out, right? So if that happens, all five of us are getting information. A closed meeting is going to have to take place.
Um, if the, if the emergency succession person can't resolve.
Right.
Yeah.
Right? That's to Jed's point about, look, keep him out.
Yeah.
But give them a resource just so they don't feel pressured to, or if they're in the middle, like I think that's important.
Um, and I, I know that a lot unresolved grievances towards the city administrator be unreported to the city council through emergency succession designee from, I have the policy specs, I'll just highlight it. And it'll, it's, I can't remember what policy number it is, but I'll figure it out.
Yep.
And so if that were to happen, I'm just going to play out practically how it works, right? Then the governance.
Would call it.
Committee would call a.
Closed meeting.
Closed meeting. Okay. A- again, depending on, like that's an option, right? It's not, that's not a forward one.
Yep.
Solution. It's an option. Okay.
And, and really it's the, it needs to be reported to the city council. Like you guys have to have a channel of communication for that. You know, how you choose to act on it.
So where does it come to the council? When will we be notified if there was, even though you resolved it? Do we need to know that?
Wait, this is written in my interpretation, is that any unresolved grievance? So if they're unable to develop internally, then they get reported and played up to the city council.
But if it's on the administrator, it can't be resolved fully internally, I would assume. That would be a subordinate solved.
Right.
And. But what is that legal risk?
Well, it could be something like somebody's mad that you parked someplace and like, it could be something that could be managed and solved. I think that also would not, or would want, would, do you understand?
Yeah. Like it could be something that, you know, somebody's upset about a decision that administrator made because they didn't feel like they got equal treatment or whatever. But once you find out that.
I'm good on the grievance side. So I'm with you on that. On the whistleblower side, I'm probably on, uh, like it needs to have.
So do you just take out the word unresolved and just say any grievance that comes against the city administrator has to be reported to the city council? What are you asking?
I mean, practically speaking, for an employee to email our council on their high, on the highest level employee in the organization. Like that in itself is.
Have an outlet for them. You like, it has to be written or they could, they're mandated to do so. Like they don't have a choice from a performance perspective because they're putting them in a very higher position.
I don't agree. I, yeah.
You know, as with all of these policies, until you see interpretations, until they live for a while to see how it actually does play out, it's hard to predict every single scenario. It really is. So if we think this is pretty dang good, maybe you want to leave it a pretty dang good. Give it a time to really dig into interpretation.
I'll detail the whistleblower senior.
It's a copy place from yours.
Oh.
No, you tell me.
I think originally it actually had same.
I know where the change is, but we didn't catch them all.
Yeah.
Um, do we take over it unresolved? That's what I'm, like, I think we just do this.
Yeah. And if we're getting inundated.
Yeah.
Like unresolved.
Yeah.
And a cooked fish in the microwave about Fridays. I don't like it. Workplace abuse.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think we live with that and see how it feels. Um.
Okay, let's keep going.
I mean, I believe there's not any situations we have to deal with it.
What does this say?
Okay.
Can you make it a little bit bigger?
Yes, I can. I am needing the same. So this is one that we had a like hour and a half discussion. Department heads loved this first off, um, about, and we had recently revised the personnel policy around related employees as well. Knowing that, like our police departments specifically have been going through their policies and they have historically had a very, very, very strict policy that was like, if you have any relationship to anybody, you are not allowed to work in the same department. And Bramin has come on and some, and had a little bit different perspective of like, look, as long as there's not supervision over them, like there might be scenarios where you have a father and a son and, but you just need to make sure that there's separation between supervisors and this provides a process for that of, you have to report it, you need to declare it, you need to make sure that there's a line of separation. But in the end, like our recruitment efforts, and we're still a small town. We don't have that right now on staff, but this at least provides an avenue of really clearly spelling out. If that scenario happens, you have to declare it. Like you need to make sure that there's a line of separation between supervision and influence over things like pay and benefits. But at least gives a process to that. And so they really appreciated this. It was really, it was a very healthy conversation. So it's great.
I think the fire department is probably the biggest.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean.
They talked about that. Yep. And he's like, look, I'm never going to be able to recruit firefighters. So if you tell me I can't have like brothers or, but there needs to be a layer of separation and you need to declare it. And we need to make sure that there's a plan in place that they're not able to influence decisions because they're related. Like they can't gang up on Peter. They can't, and this puts a process to it. Where before it's just been like, oh, well, you know.
Yeah. I think a parent sibling, sibling sibling relationship. Absolutely logical. I think, you know, if you, you change that to a romantic relationship, that's how this issue that we're generally speaking, right? Um, and so I just want us to make sure we're thinking about all of them and not the easy layup of a father, son serving on the fire department.
We had husband and wife. From the fire department.
What?
Well, weren't they husband and wife?
Nope.
Oh, maybe there was something else.
But for like. That example got us stuck. We were talking about this.
It was an example that I was offering to. Yep. Good point. Pekins.
All right, let's keep going. So then we get to.
Okay.
Two point, two point three ongoing. And we spent some time with.
Well, we have just gone through this, like we recently went through this one. Um, but.
So I'm going to trust that there aren't any, um.
This is going to be one where I think to Ryan's point, like when we really start going through some of these budgeting things, like we're going to be fine.
How are you going financial condition?
Yeah, maybe it's enough.
A lot of budgeting.
Like today was a really good example of the, the budget of transfers. It was like, that, that was a great example of like, hey, going forward, you got to provide more context in your council memo because the general person reading these doesn't know what these budgeted transfers are. And like, and so these are, this is going to help, I think, create better data coming out to you guys initially.
Excellent. Good.
Um, so this is the it's going to be the next one. And I think we might have some things I might want to talk about. I think. Budgeting.
Anyways, tell me when to stop. Jill, you had a, did we resolve the comment that we had, that Jill had shared? I captured it before, when, when I talked before you offered it. Pretty earlier. I don't remember what it was about though.
Um, I think it was about the cost of governance and specifically whether that was related to 2020.
Oh.
Or, right?
Well, I had a question about the budgeting, right? To whether I, that was back when I thought we were going to go live like mid-year. So I was questioning, do we actually have a budget for that this year? Um, I think the other question I had was if you scroll down to the tax rate, which is.
It was my thing, wasn't it?
It wouldn't fund that all.
Um, so up just a little bit.
Nope. All right. Four point, uh, two point four point eight.
Yeah, very bottom.
I thought it was.
This one right here.
And.
Yeah.
The, I have one on that. I mean, the way it reads, it seems challenging. I think the conversation that we landed on last time is anything greater than? So I feel like we just need to put a greater than symbol in front of zero.
Hmm. Yep.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Preliminary budget that is greater than zero of the previous fiscal year.
You can't go above. But you could go zero or below.
Yeah. Cause I mean, that's what you're trying to say there is the tax, like what we shoot for every year is that we'll be at a flat tax rate. Just the way it was worded without greater than, maybe it's greater than equal to actually.
Yeah.
Would be the more correct.
So I don't want to make that on here.
No, neither.
Does that limit options?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, sorry. It's not greater than, less than.
I'm just confused.
No. Thou shall not.
It's negative. Yeah. Again, I mean, it's right.
How long can you do this? Like 10 years?
Yeah, wait.
Yeah.
It, it definitely limits. It will, it definitely limits. Well, I. One thing I will say, I have appreciated a lot of it, but you guys just need to know what is gonna come to you. I've appreciated that it has. For Rob and I, it has. Required department head level. It's less of the like zero sum game of like, oh, we, you know, how are we gonna get what we want in our departments? And it's more of. We're going in at zero percent. If you need more than that, you better be darn ready to make a presentation to council that shows some serious data. Behind your ask. Now, that's gonna put you guys on the hot seat when that presentation comes. But what it forces department has to do is to really be thoughtful about. Do I, do I actually have data that supports this or am I emotionally reacting to needing more people? Or, and most of the time it's around personnel, like. Is there an actual reason? Is there data that support that reason or, or KPI, you know, things that you were measuring or is it just a reaction to something? And it's. You can already see how it's elevating department heads. To be less of this zero sum game where it's like, ooh, there, you know, I'm gonna ask for this and you ask for that and you take a hit there and I'll take this here. It's like, nope. You work within your budget at zero percent. And then anything above and beyond that, you better be able to articulate why.
And positions Rob as not being the bad guy in every conversation.
But he appreciates it. Like, this gives him some onus to say, no, we, I actually can't bring anything forward about that. So don't come to me. Be ready to show your depth.
Well, I hope it takes it even another step where it positions the group to collaboratively get in.
Exactly.
Start talking about where rather than saying, hey, who got to Hannah first or who got to really good day? We're all in the room and we have fifteen things and we can do three of them. So let's all encase each other and come up with a best option. Hopefully that collaboration just.
And that has already been organically happening and it just, it takes away. That zero sum game of trying to do this. Now, it's going to put it on the council. Cuz that, it won't happen all the time, but there's going to be times where. You're gonna end up having the department head that comes and says like, look, we can't work within this. Like, this year's going to be a prime example because our valuations are at zero. Most of the time, we actually don't have a. Zero percent increase. We have an increase for a levy that matches our property valuations. That we can work with on a, on a staff level and collaborate to make sure that we're meeting the needs of what we need. Now, this year is a prime example where we're at a zero percent valuation increase, so you're going to get an ask above zero percent. And then. That's gonna, they're gonna, that person is gonna be required to show up as a director. And an apartment head and say, I've got the data to support this. And council has to be able, then you're gonna have to weather that.
See, so I know you're conjuring when you hear zero. We get the valuation increase, right? So last year was like fourteen percent. Valuation increase.
The tax.
So it's not like you, for twenty years, you're working at the same pot of money to sell, like. Things cost more all the time.
Ninety-nine percent. It's two years. It's with zero percent.
Without being at zero or.
Zero.
Rate is different than happily continual, obviously.
Tax rate is different than tax level.
That looks good.
Uh-huh.
But the smart savvy taxpayer knows.
There's something.
They're paying more tax.
Yeah.
Well, let's keep going. If you're all good with that, let's keep going. Cause we got a lot of ground. I, I just go ahead.
I do think I, I still struggle with it, but that's fine. The embrace, finally. Um, I do think. Like. Council then needs to be prepared to be the ones to say, no, I'm gonna be here.
Yeah.
And I, I, I'm gonna be here. I'm glad that, like, like, tho- those are hard decisions to do publicly, like. If somebody's coming and saying like, I can't. Run a department unless I get two more hires. That's, that's, those are hard conversations to have at the dais. And so I personally, I feel like. I'm not the one to make that decision. Like, that's an operational decision that needs to be made by the people running the company, right? Not me necessarily, but that's my opinion.
It will definitely put. More on us on the council, but, but the, the piece of that that I just, I do really appreciate is that. It is going to force. Like. I, not, it's like sink or swim. Like, if you actually think that this tax rate increase, you need it for your department to. Truly function, like, you'd better be able to define that with some serious data.
Well, Jen makes a great point on it, right? So if you put all the directors. In a room.
Mm-hmm.
And. One of them is saying, I need three more people or I can't run a department. And they aren't able to convince their peers of that.
Right.
Like. Good luck convincing the general public why we need more. So I think it does, it does spur some good internal conversation that. Gets them bring, be brought forward.
I think the other thing is the linkage is new to us. So you're gonna be resolving that in that meeting.
Right.
To a degree before it comes forward. You're gonna sign off on the fact that, hey, yeah, this is the ask. That's going to council based on the collective collaboration group. You're gonna have the data and the support that.
When we've talked about that, well, I, and I've been. Very stern to them. Some of them are really going to struggle with it. Some of you do really well with it, but it's like, don't, don't expect to be presenting to council unless your ask. Can show trends, it can show some data, it can show KPIs that have been met or not met. It can show that your response time is, you know, way longer than it was three years ago. Your call volume, like. And if you can't do that, you're not ready to go before the council. Like, that.
So I'm saying they will be coming to council. You're saying they're not gonna come to council.
If it made it through, I mean, she's the CEO of the city. So if you're in a room. And someone's asking for three, I doubt she's gonna say, you get to go present to council. If nobody in the room agrees on the three.
Yeah.
You know, I, I just don't see that happening.
Yeah.
Hopefully they can get to a place of like, hey, council, this is the discussion we had. I as the leader. I'm signing off on this increase and this is why. And these are the other sacrifices we made through the budget process. But this one is one that we, we weren't able to, to bring at a zero percent. That's why we're asking you for two or whatever it might be.
These limitations. Anna, not for staff, right? Jim said, so. It's us saying, Anna, you can't bring us unless you have. Right? So you're not gonna prop up a director without your support to say. Go see what happens.
Good luck. Yeah, it's gonna be an interesting new process. It will be, it is. I think we have to try it and see. And if we feel like after a year or two of it, we're like, ooh, this.
It's too tight.
It's too tight or all it's doing is just punting the major ask for the council at a. Future, like. The goal isn't to put the council on the hot seat either. The goal is that we're really clearly able to articulate. Where we have a deficiency and that there's some data tied to it.
And hopefully staff gives and takes, right? Someone says, well.
Absolutely.
You need this, I understand it. I'll put my. Ask off for a year. Or whatever until, but.
Well, and again, I really, you don't have to do that if you have. If we have data in place that's. Like, these things should be able to be kind of seen coming a couple of years out. I'm like, you.
A lot of them material change.
Exactly. Like, we should be able to see them coming and plan for them if you're really following your trends and your data and your. Um. So it's. It's gonna be new for us, but I think.
I think it creates a lot of innovation.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Right? Because that's what happens in my room, right? Where the, the team will get together, they'll work through it all.
Mm-hmm.
And then they start getting creative on how could we rearrange?
Yep.
To actually accomplish both. And what would that look like? And so it forces those discussions.
It's already like setting of. How do we replace people, one person with two people instead of, you know, it's like, how do we? Better. Stretch out dollars and so I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep this moving. I don't.
Okay. All right. Asset management two point five. Excuse me, anybody have anything that they flagged? In asset management.
And we did just go through these, didn't we?
Yeah.
Cause Rob had just finished them. As we updated the procurement, we added the legal procurement review. That was, we have just gone through that one. Oh, here's two point six is the. We're gonna see. To get minutes of succession. That's amazing. Limit practices. Something we had just done too. We talked about director level hiring.
Communication support. What was two?
I think this was about the school.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that was my other comment of.
That's all we resolved on.
This must be looking pretty good, so.
Yeah, true. I mean, it wasn't too long ago.
I would say we just went down and all of us, so.
All right.
Given that. Okay, and then we made open ends.
Okay, right, no?
It really not.
Only four pages.
Why would you do that?
That's like telling the pitcher, did you not give up a hit? Someone seven pages? He's not Sebastian.
Stan's progress, uh, Anna and I did a lot of work on this. I don't remember if you brought it through to staff to get more foot there. I don't know what that.
Yeah, that's what you looked at for ten. Oh, I'm sorry. Tell you were.
So the global, as you know. Is succinctly as possible, answers all three of those typical questions and ends. What good are we trying to create? Who's the recipient to the good and? At, at what cost? So the city of Sartell exists so that residents, businesses and guests. Have reliable city services and a strong infrastructure. While also valuing an enriched and engaging community. For a reasonable financial investment comparable to similar communities. Rosy.
So a lot. Give them a little context. A lot of the, what you'll see in this ends. We took off of the. Strategic initiatives documents. You'll notice some similar language between the two. Um. Some of the strategic initiative stuff was. Yes, was operational in nature. And so we had to dial it. Up a layer, but you'll notice some similarities. Like, I think that statement was. In there.
All right, let's keep going.
This is where it gets into the.
Yeah, so can we get all of one point on the whole thing?
In one.
One.
Good.
Yeah, I must go one last step.
Are you want me to get one point, one point two?
Well, maybe not fit. That might just be too.
Let's just, let's just start with that.
Okay. So one point one, city infrastructure, facilities, technology and equipment are delivered and managed. To minimize risk and sustain secure and liable services now and into the future. So again, broader statement, but it takes. Your ends down one level of interpretation. Not into meetings. So staff could have stopped there. Um, staff is Anna and myself as we were thinking about this. Kind of realized that there's more to say. So as you look at all the content for one point one, point one. Which is one, 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 all the way through one, 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 four. I think it just stops at four.
Mm-hmm.
Let's just take a little quiet time to absorb that. And then let's see if anybody has some concerns. If you've got a concern, by the way. Come up with alternative language. Don't just say, I'm right. Can we fix it? We're into solutions tonight. Give me a sign when we're finished with that section, so I know we can start talking. Jenny, good. Go to the next one. Well, it's just, I wanna make sure everybody's good with that. Do you have any concerns when you're looking at that? And refreshment, because I haven't done these yet. These get monitoring reports too. Oh, yeah. With all hands and all executive divisions.
The, so. Play out a real example here. I like how this reads, right? So. Our technology is supported by the school. There was some disruption there last month or last week, I don't know, one of those, two weeks ago. Um. And. So I like that we didn't get involved into that dialogue. I do think there would be, like, Anna, maybe I gotta wait until we get your. Plan on this, but. Fast forward six months, same situation happens with this employees. I would love just some assurance. From you to council to say. I've got a plan, everything's good, which keeps us from having to talk about it publicly, which gets a whole bunch of traction. Does that make sense?
Why would she not be as on top of it as she possibly can be?
What, you're just saying that there's something that inspires me to.
Well, our, our. Public meeting last two weeks ago was deciding that we should go to RFP or not. So we all had a group think tank about what we should do. Again, we're saying, hey, Anna, you got this. Um.
Well, what would you do, Hannah, if the same situation? Came up again in six months?
Well, my goal is in the next six months to prevent it from happening. So. To go off RFP and make sure that you've got, like, either it's a revision to our current agreement or.
Sounds like.
Entirely new agreement.
Now, it's bottom line, you're being held accountable for one, 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 three. Technology systems provide easy access to local data for the public and protect against. Yeah.
What does easy access mean? Do you mean like? Easy access to the website for citizens to be able to look at information or easy access to the technology you use internally? To me, I feel like there should be a secure access. To data.
Yeah. Well, and Jill, to your point, like, until we get the interpretation of this, like.
Right.
I, I hear the message like, hey, speak now or forever hold your peace. I, I don't know. If I get an interpretation, it's like, that's left field. We'll probably have to revisit it.
Wh- which is. Which is why it's not forever hold your peace. It's, you know that you're gonna see monitoring, you're gonna see interpretations. And if Anna submits an interpretation that you say, gosh, that's, that's, that is reasonable. Uh. And it sends the organization in a direction that we can. Um. Collectively think. Uh, no, then your recourse is to go back to your language. And adjust the language that forces her in a different direction. That's how you guide. You don't get to say, yeah, that was a reasonable interpretation, but you need to pick that one. Cause we like.
I think you're, I don't know if this Friday, the Monday update. About our secondary force main issues.
Hmm.
And I look at this, what are, you know. That's gonna come in the monitoring report in the red, right? Wouldn't you say that we don't have a secondary? Stormwater sewer backup? So would that technically be something that the monitoring reporter pick up?
Well. It, it depends on the interpretation. Like, in my interpretation of this is that our current one does meet measurable needs and that are existing and anticipated. But if that one goes out. Well, you're, you're. You're, yeah, then we're out of compliance. And then that's when you'd get a red flag, like this is.
And it's interesting how all that's intertwined, right?
Yeah.
So her interpretation is it meets it.
Yours.
In our CIP, we're planning to add another one.
Yeah, right.
And then I look at minimized risk. What, how do we minimize risk with that?
Well, and like I read, I'm just reading the top one, like avoid service disruptions. Like, there's no way to completely avoid service disruptions unless you have redundancy of every single one of them. You know, so that's where we wouldn't. That one, we would not be able to. Well, but it's facilities and equipment. Is that the same thing as?
But it, it is something that should be planned for long term.
Right.
It's not in the next five years, are you gonna have a backup water system? But like, should we? You know, well, we probably do, but I'm just saying.
This is, this is the next platform for you to lay it out for both of you, right? Where, hey, these are, I think they're here, but these are the things that I think we need to address.
Under that needs to say, you know, a lot of this is very, um. Specifically, like regularly maintained and, you know, provides secure access. It, it, it should also almost include like. That it's planned for. It may not be that it's this immediate, like regularly maintained, but that it's at least, if you're noticing. You know, Jed, I, I think back to our, our key conversation. you know, Jedi, I think back to our RP conversation with IT, IT contract. And you're like, hey, we need to know what are our single points of failure so we can plan for them. Not that we're going to fix them tomorrow. We just need to be planning for them. And so it's, maybe it's a change in language of like it regularly maintained or planned for, predicted, something so that like it's on our radar.
Anticipated. Anticipate growth as well as just in failure.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
And I think in the report audit, we're meeting it now.
Yep, but.
Based on projections, here's when we're going to need to do something different.
That's true. Yep.
But that gives you like peace of mind, right?
To say we don't call these things out.
Got to a point where every system had a backup. Like everybody can speak better.
I think.
I was just gonna say, single point fail. I wonder if there's somewhere we can insert this in here. Well, because that's an evolving thing. Like as soon as you get a backup for this, and let's say you get a backup for all the infrastructures. You have so many other single points of failure. If you combine a position into a hybrid position, you have the right candidate, super talented. Well, you've just created another single point failure. There's nobody on your existing team.
Yeah, our single point failures are probably.
That's an evolving target. And I would love to hear you report on like, here's what I identify right now as our single points failure and what our plans moving forward are to address that. Because those will change.
And so how do you want to adjust language here? To get at some of the things that you were talking about.
Do we push a 1115 that just calls out?
Not allow critical single point of failure.
Right. Yeah, something of that.
That way you can.
Or identify.
Identify. Yeah. Like I might have to. Yeah.
Well, yeah, maybe a little bit more teeth. I appreciate it. I'm like, identify and assess. I don't want just, hey, we got that there, that there, like.
What did you just call? Identify and assess.
And assess critical.
Critical infrastructure is identified and assessed for single.
Points of failure.
Points of failure.
Right. So it's you.
I like that.
Here's all 10 critical points.
Yep.
I've assessed them. These two are really important. We need to solve for. The other ones are.
Well, yeah.
And the council should be aware.
Absolutely. And they should be in our CIP and.
Right.
Is there an issue at all with the word avoid in 1111? That's, that's like, that's harsh. Minimize.
Minimize, minimize.
Or avoid extended.
Yeah.
Like your goal, avoid, what do you want? Have something in place of contingency plan.
Because at least that's in her control. Yeah, control, avoid. Full stop.
Every, yeah.
Jill, on 1113, did you get, you were asking about public versus private or something?
She put the words.
Secure. Easy. I like that better.
All right, let's, let's keep going to the 1.1.2 city roadways. So take a moment to read that.
Oh, that's it. Okay. This one might need more. Oh, because this is specific to development. I hated drafting this section.
Yeah, I struggled on that. All that's.
I did everything coming in. I do now as I think about it from a development side. So over the last four years, we've had a lot of developers come in that want to do cul-de-sacs because it's cheaper. And so here we're talking about being cost effective for the developer. From a public safety, roundabouts are catastrophic.
Yeah.
Or candy.
Cul-de-sac.
Excuse me, not roundabouts, cul-de-sac. Thank you.
They cause tornadoes. Did you see that? Yeah, there's somebody except that the traffic, the traffic going in circles and it keeps a heated vortex and it.
Makes sense.
Triggers.
Sorry.
Nevermind.
I bet they'll speak to that in our next council meeting. I would like to see it.
Not the word cost effective, but like.
Planful.
Or.
Like, like something that gets that like, like some, in the best interest of the city, like and the city's like long-term planning. Like I, I hate it when development comes in and does something and I think about the long art development and there are reasons for that, right? But now you cannot even barely drive in that parking lot because it's like the one going into the coffee shop is just.
I'd love to get some planner for a vision there, right? Like to me, it's like strategic growth, but I'm guessing Carrie has some planning lingo that would fit well in there of how we should. I mean, yes, we want to be cost effective, but we don't also want to do like spot development and say, yeah, like, you know, as a providence is a good example, right? Like it was more cost effective for them to do four cul-de-sacs than to have through streets. Yeah, totally makes sense.
And now we got all the traffic going down one road.
And so it creates bottlenecks later.
Consistent with the vision for the like city and the city's planning efforts and something around.
Yeah, somewhere on planning efforts and like just some planning lingo in there rather than being so focused on being cost effective for a developer.
I'll run that past Carrie.
You kind of have that dot two, right? Rest is creating needs now and into the future.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. Like that has to be taken into consideration. And I like the like remain in compliance with city code and policies because I think the more we can point to those, the better. But I, I, I think it's something along this line. I don't know if I like strategic growth, but it's something, some planner term around that I can run past her.
Should we keep going then? You ready to keep moving?
Anything else around development related items? One thing that I wondered is, I don't know how to frame this, but like I think about equitability amongst development requests, like making sure that oh, that's the right word I'm thinking of. Like, we can't do one thing for one developer, not another thing for another developer. And when they make these one-off requests, it puts us in this really tough spot of, well, we do that for you, then we set this precedent for this one and this one and this one and this one. I don't know how to articulate that, but something along the lines of like development has to be, from a financial perspective, it needs to be planned out. Maybe that's the city code and policies piece.
Well, so what we're not including here, and I'm trying to rack my brains for the term of it, but what is our strategic growth document we update every 10 years?
Oh, comp plan.
Comp plan.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe that's.
A lot of this should just be driven back to our comp plan. Does it align with our comp plan?
Because that's really what lays out.
And that keeps us from getting into the one-off request here versus there. It's like, hey, here's our comp plan. Maybe within that, we also will say like, we are going to require that you keep our planning.
So.
Something within more than a decade up to it.
Yeah.
So what drives what? The comprehensive plan, does that drive ends or do ends drive the comprehensive plan?
Comprehensive plan is a, a strategic planning document. I want to necessarily say, it's almost like an ends document. I mean, it's intended to be the driver for.
Which is why I'm, I'm wondering what's driving what. I mean.
Because it's not really an operational document. I mean, it's.
It's an end.
It's intended to be like the mothership of here's how your community is getting design. And so I do think referencing it in here, like it should really go hand in hand with 1.1.2, like almost everything out of 1.1.2 should.
Who owns the comprehensive plan?
Wouldn't it be where we even want something in here that says, I'm not having updated comprehensive plan every 70 years?
Yeah.
If that is an ends. And we're referencing.
So something along the lines of, yeah. All that infrastructure.
But I mean, infrastructure goes into that, right?
Well, that's true.
Everything about how our community developed goes into this.
I wonder if it's a 1.1.3.
Could it not be 1122 and just expressed in our 10-year comprehensive plan or whatever the sequence that you do it?
And no greater than a 10 year. Is that? So I was trying to get something around limiting the, the years, like it shouldn't be longer than.
I think those should be what we're trying, I think you have two things trying to go into 1122.
I know.
Feel like break that out. One is that it needs to align with comp plan. The other one is that it needs, the comp plan needs to be kept current. And honestly, it's up for interpretation of what is current. Right now, we're talking about, hey, we did it eight years ago and we're focused on this downtown.
Yeah.
Town square, and that's no longer a thing. You could argue now that it's not current.
Development addresses community needs now and into the future is expressed in the adopted comprehensive plan and then.
Thou shall not allow for an update.
Is this still negative language in ends? So it's just stating things.
You prescribe ends. These are the exact results we expect.
You don't have to pivot.
Means. The current comp plan maintained by the city with.
Well, I almost wonder if a 113.
So plans, plans in and of themselves are means though.
Yeah. There's pieces apart of the comprehensive plan that are definitely need. They're calling staff, here's your marching orders of things to go try and achieve.
But.
But the overall, yeah, the overall. It's kind of funky. It's almost like a strategic plan for your overall community planning. Like design, future.
And I know it goes into more depth, but does it, could it align with what you've been outlining here in these ends of the whole ends policy?
You're saying bumped up.
I'm, yeah, I'm exactly saying this should be the top of the heap. Your ends policies should clearly say, these are results we expect to the city to to achieve for our, for our members.
And there's global ends there for. Yeah.
Well, it doesn't have to be in the global ends. We, I just would want you to agree what, what trumps what is. Otherwise you're going to be serving two masters.
Yeah. And I feel like this document, this document trumps everything else. I go back to kind of an overarching question I've had is like, do we know another local unit of government that's in this model? And if so, like every community that I'm aware of should have a comp plan.
I'm not saying to not have.
No, no, I'm just wondering like, how did they, if they're in this governing model, then how do they build their comp plan into it?
Yeah, it'd be something to go look at because presumably they would have one and maybe they do clearly think of it as a means document.
Strategic plans, aren't we?
And not living in the ends. I think referencing it makes a ton of sense, like especially as you're talking about the community needs now and into the future.
Just trying to think through like ends is for us, ends is like 10 years. Each plan is three, five years. And but in our actual ends, like I can't operate. Like you must have a strategic plan.
Yeah.
Is reference so that I have to, I'm always required to bring forward to accomplish.
Like I think it's calling out to Ryan's point, a separate category here of like operate, you're talking, oh, you can operate.
Ensure a.
Ensure a.
Update or.
Relevant.
Yeah.
Do you call up?
Period.
Period. I, and then leave it to my interpretation.
Except that's under the bullet of city roadways.
Right. It should be its own 1.1.3.
Oh, sorry.
I don't know though, because again, here we're saying like that document lives within staff now. And we're just referencing it.
But a comp plan deals with way more than city roadways.
It does. And so we may reference it in other areas of the ends here, right?
Doesn't be above. Sorry. It would, it would take the place of 1.1.1 would be.
I was gonna say, I think we start right out of the gate. 1.1.1 is, have a comp plan.
Yeah. I mean, that's the basic.
Yeah, sure. I like that.
And then this becomes 1.1.2. Sure. A relevant and how did I write?
Current.
Thank you. Providing for 1.1. But it should call out all of those items. I'll have to change the number in all this, but basically you're going to have to noodle from that. I can feel you thinking, I am me. We've spent a lot of time together.
And you're contemplating the means versus the ends.
Plans are means. There's no way around it. Plans are means. What good for whom at what cost? How does that fit into that equation?
Right. So this is saying that you just have to have the plan.
Yeah. Feel on means.
Yeah.
Maybe it's not color.
Let's go in some别的house.
It's a big, big flowery, empty lady.
Okay, let's just come back to that. Well, and to that point, like the comp plan also deals with this, like it's not just 1.1.
Could you acknowledge existing without your strategic plan, your comp plan? Yes, you could. Of course you know, you said.
Until the developer brings it up, we don't.
We don't really even talk about it. It's one of those documents that like cities do so they can get grant dollars, but like hardly, it's kind of become an old, it was like a 1990s, early 2000s thing. And it's kind of become a shelf document for a lot of.
It's also like an external message for developers to look at to go, hey, we're thinking about Sartell to do a project. They would look at our comprehensive plan online to say, here's where Sartell's looking to develop.
What if it's ELs? If it's that. Yeah, to your point, maybe it's that you can't operate without it and that's an EL.
Yeah.
Now I think.
Carrie uses it in.
Carrie uses it in her, she has to use it to reference, you know, like if you're doing a variance or a.
And remember, ends and ELs are both important. One isn't more important than the other. They just do two different jobs.
Okay, so we need to, I haven't, it needs to go in the ELs. I do think, I mean, even this last affordable housing ask, it was like, okay, we clearly need to get that updated then. And so this would puts it in there as an EL that like, you gotta have that thing current and updated and stay on top of it.
Is there an outcome of that plan though, that we would want in? Like, I mean, it, it exists for reasons. Sounds like we don't use it unless we have to.
Well, the input was what, or impact was for planners?
Mostly for the planning.
For developers.
Developers.
We did it by the end result though.
Guiding goal of that is to.
Guide.
Like what's that result? Would we want something like that?
Well, I think as we go through a, as a plan gets updated, probably the next two years.
Yeah.
Like from that, we're going to have a different.
It does exactly. It is, that comp plan is what's gonna address community needs now and into the future. So I think it's in the right spot here. I just think it needs to be an EL that we call out. And then I, I'll have Carrie look at that language too.
Good work everyone.
Yeah, that was a doozy.
That was good work though.
But I think that is more appropriate because now reading this, like, well, this is also compliancy. Yeah.
So are there any other concerns in 1.2? And let's take some quiet to just take in.
I'm gonna hate doing these interpretations.
You survived all of the.
I know, but they are a lot more like black and white. These are like, well, what's an appropriate response time? Like I'm supposed to determine that?
Talk to your staff.
And to work with your staff.
Yeah.
They stop justification.
I've stopped calling out specifically justifications because I saw too many organizations trying to create them out of nothing when it wasn't necessary.
I don't have my, my handful of them.
But maybe there'd be something like that.
This would be where you could further clarify the justification for what you put in the invitation.
But it has to be setting an external source. It can't be Anna says, I justify this because I think it's a good idea.
Right.
It's got to be seen.
No, this will be really healthy for us though. Like I, the thing I like about is that it's going to force us to call out some of this information from the front end. Like this is what we've determined to be an appropriate response time on such and such dates that you can't. Like this is what we've determined to be an appropriate response time on such and such dates that you can't manipulate that later down the road when you're trying to make an ask for. Staffing or anything. It's like, nope, you called that out in your end. Like, you don't get to make that up later.
A little bit more so we can see what comes next.
Keep going like.
No, just kind of park it on one, two, four, because I didn't hear any comments coming up from one, two, one to one, two, three. So. Let's just keep working through it. We have italicized in one, two, four continually fosters. Was that to flag it for some reason?
I have no idea. That was probably just a table.
Um, one, two, four, one. The available gives me some angst.
Housing options. Yeah, available meaning we can't dictate the market.
Yeah, correct. Like we can dictate that there's options.
There's options.
Or we can encourage that there's options.
Yeah.
But we can't say whether they're available or not, right?
Yeah, that's a good point.
We wanna have fiber internet? Are we signing up to run fiber internet to every doorstep?
Well, that was, I was just about to say, I wonder about the same thing with the word equal. Like, we need to provide access to. I'm not sure that we can equally provide it because things like fiber are only certain locations.
Two point or one point, two, four, two, there is equal access to city infrastructure and reliable services.
Yeah.
Right? Cause like my mind, when I say reliable service, like gets into like the hall of garbage hauling, right? Like.
Like you can get a contract. Do you think of?
I think you take off fiber in the last.
Yeah, that's.
Would it think more since for equitable access to city infrastructure? Equal means, I mean, you get what.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Equitable access to.
Yeah, good call.
No.
Can we back to two, four, one after this though? Hear more.
Two, four. This one, the variety of housing options for different.
You're saying it's hard for us to determine what options would be available?
So we don't get to determine what's available, right?
There is a place for me to rent tomorrow.
I need low income housing and you're saying it has to be available to me right now, like. No, we make sure that there's a variety of housing options that are within our city.
Like zoned for.
Yeah.
Maybe need to say that because.
Yeah, available is meaning to, you're both, you're interpreting available differently.
I was just coming out from perspective, these are ends. So I mean, are we, are we asking her to have? Some sort of strategy and influence on future options that become available? Or as she hears about rentals getting down to this level, her and her team get in. Cause a part of the ends is that options remain available in any environment, because it's an end. So directionally. Would she take a proactive approach in that?
That is a good point.
Beyond zoning, like, cause that would be your job to say, hey, guys, we're like out of rental space here. Like I wanna bring something to the council. Cause our end said I have to make sure there's options throughout time.
Collective programs.
Or I think of options at a zoning high level, right? So you got. Single family, like R one, R two, R three, not getting, breaking R three into workforce. And market. Right? So we're simple. The way I read this is.
Do you put the word then zoning to your point, like then what I'm gonna drive out of that is making sure that our. Like we're not zoning everything to R one, like that we are.
There are a variety of zoning options. Um, to accommodate housing.
For different housing availability or, you know.
Housing. There are writing zoning, zoning options to, to accommodate.
Housing.
Needs.
For.
Needs.
Oh, yeah, true.
But our zoning doesn't get into. Income level. Our zoning is, is it multi-family or is it single family?
Yeah.
And I don't know that we wanna say like, we're requiring you to bring forward.
No.
Income level.
I think it's stages of life, period.
I would agree.
Yeah, I was more asking the question of how we word this, will determine whether she's like, well, the zones are great. And staff's like, we got enough zoning. Yeah, but we don't actually have any activity on those zoning. If there's some sort of strategy, we should have.
Actually, after housing needs, you could just put a period and delete the rest, in my opinion. There's a variety of.
Hold yourself.
Yeah.
Anna, how would you interpret that? Accommodate housing needs. What, what are you gonna base a reasonable interpretation?
Not anything that the council's gonna wanna hear because right now it's. Like, and the housing is what's the biggest need out there. And so then we, this would tell me that we need to do some rezoning. Cause we don't have very many R three compared to R one, comparative to R one. And I said, that's what we're wanting to drive out of it. To your point, is that what we're really wanting to drive out of this?
Well, I mean, if there's a need, there's a need, but let's be planful about it instead of like, just like somebody's coming forward and we're rezoning stuff, right?
You could objectively look at and interpret to say. There's R three lots available that are for sale right now, right? So you've achieved, there's zoning options to accommodate housing needs.
Yeah.
If we got to a point where there wasn't.
Then.
Yeah, it's saying that there's a majority or a, like that if there's a third percent, just that there's a variety of. Zoning options. Yeah, available, right?
And I saw Rapids was going through this in the sense where they were trying to encourage.
Yeah.
Single family.
Yeah, and they don't get anybody to bite on it.
And Becker gave lots away. And now that developer went bankrupt, so.
Yeah. Okay, I, I, I like that. I think. That gets at the true spirit of what we're trying to.
Yeah, that's what.
Like from a market wide, like we can't drive vacancy or availability or even necessarily types of housing. What we can drive is. What's zoned, what? If we get to a point where all of our R threes are built on, well, now we probably.
To reevaluate that.
Need to reevaluate because now we actually have limited that variety of housing options.
I would better update our comp plan.
Yeah, I, I like that. I think that's good.
Alright, shall we move on?
I wanna make sure that I can remember what these. Four point three and four point four kind of read the same. Like access information. Well.
Yeah.
I feel a bit different.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I'll see. Oh, this one I really struggled on too. I wanted to get in the weeds on this one.
Yep, city makes reasonable investments in public funds. Focus on the best long-term value and maintains comparable benchmarks.
That's so hard. Like we talked about that comparable benchmarks for a while, because it's like. It, it's so dependent on every single, you know, like I, I can look comparable. Community sizes, but if they don't have the. X, Y's.
What does investment in public funds mean to you?
Investment of, not in.
Like use of, you know.
Okay, I see that. My, I missed that.
I feel like Rob's, uh, new licensure. Yeah. Like he, he would be a great resource there within that community to find something.
And we did pull these from other cities, like, so these were. I thought this section would be a lot longer, but a lot of, I mean, it kind of speaks for itself. It's like, you need to make sure that the recommendations are balanced and that.
There's also a lot of state law that restricts what we can invest in. So it's not like. It's not like you guys can take it and throw it to the stock market, we do well.
And this is really more about like, let me say.
Cannot buy it.
This is really saying more so like, at like our street fund or our. Like our E Ls limit so much of what we can do already that. A lot of what I was coming up with here, like we already had covered in our executive, it's like, this is really just to say. You're gonna make a recommendation for something that requires an investment of public fund, like it needs to balance the service costs and the risk of the life and, you know.
This one, I'm actually the most comfortable with of all of them, because I, I know our auditors are also gonna chip with that. They're the ones guiding us to say, hey, you can't mess here, you shouldn't, but like.
So what is the community one where they come in and present us?
That's the audit findings.
Yeah. And they, they haul this out in there. One thing I wonder about the wording for one point, three point two is, um. Instead of maintaining stable financial benchmarks, I wonder if it's. Cause again, you can't, it's really tough to compare community to community and benchmark, but I wonder if it's maintaining. Stable financial, um. Like, if you take your grant and you go, you go apply for this grant, you get this money, well, now all of a sudden it's created. Financial burdens down the road that are no longer. What's the word I'm looking for on that? Like, we're maintaining financial stability and long-term. Costs related to those investments. Like, we're not gonna go do something just because. It's free money. It's, we're, we gotta make sure that there's a plan long-term of how we're gonna, I don't know.
Yeah, I think about that back to the article money, right?
Yeah.
Very direct, like, let's not go buy.
Things that are gonna cost a bunch of money down the road, like. How do we make sure that we're investing in public funds in a way that's like maintainable? It's. It's not gonna create a bunch of costs down the road. It's something that if we're investing those funds, we can maintain it long.
Yeah, I think like long-term liability.
Oh, liability.
Financial liability of those.
Like liabilities are what I'm looking for, like.
Well, like, think about. The acquisition of land, right?
Yeah.
So if the city was gonna purchase something and they, you were gonna build a. You'd plans to build something on it, well. You'd have to make sure that there's long-term value there, that there's a return on the investment. Oh, wait, we did.
Oh, wait, we did.
I would say maybe, I mean. Uh, liability doesn't seem to fit there as I read that full sentence. Stable financial. Plan or conditions.
Maintain financial.
Maintain financial.
Stability, yeah.
Not maintain stable financial stability though.
Correct.
Okay, now you're now.
Financial stability.
Thank you.
I prefer we wanna be double stable.
Wait, no.
My.
It's gonna impact on maintaining. Yeah, yeah, something along those lines. Just to. Make sure that we're being. Mindful of that. I just, this makes me, I just had this conversation today. We applied for a grant on the river road to get. What was it? Native plantings or whatever, the landscaping along the river. Tony's like, you literally effectively made my job harder and more maintenance for me long-term. Like I gotta go through there and. Maintain all these native plantings. And it's like, you apply for grant because you're getting free landscaping, but now it actually.
They just burn them anyways.
Except for you're along the river, so like, what do you, you know? Like. Might not have been worth it.
Let's keep going. I think that's, is that it? I think that's it.
As a lead inspector, those native plantings are overtaking your, uh.
Overlook.
Overlook, yeah.
Yes, that's the like, the thing they're like this.
Well, it's a very young lead inspector. I love that none of us called out the back room.
When we were.
We're gonna go on about the weeks nobody threw down the bussing.
I just got the cannabis letter today from Kelly's.
Okay. So that feels good. Rob will be very happy about that.
Like y'all were chomping at the bit to see ends because it was the missing piece of the puzzle. Now that you see all four quadrants and you get them.
E L is the, oh, that's a defining.
Boundary, that's the, yeah.
Definitely.
Okay, but where, let's go back to that quick. Where do we put the comp plan in here? Cause that should be included somewhere. Is it under?
Um, is it? I mean, there's no touching it. Unemployment or financial condition.
No.
Assets.
Well, it could be maybe asset management.
Something to do with.
May have to be its own. Well, what about the? Treatment.
Nope.
Could be, could be in the, the global constraint. Same commercial.
Ads expressed in a current version of the comprehensive plan, like missions invaluable in that. Just keep that one on that down there.
If you created another E L. To house the comprehensive plan. Are there any other?
Well, I'm just wondering if we need a E L's action on like planning of that.
I'm sure there's stuff for planning financial, but you have a lot of plans.
Well, I just am thinking like, like thou shall not operate without a comp plan. Thou should not operate without a. Zoning map, a future land use map, a B schedule. And so maybe we had, I need to take a stab at.
Or recognizing encumbrances on easements, i.e. house through the middle.
Oh, my gosh, yes. I'm glad nobody, we got, we got chewed about that in the meeting prior, but. That's how that house got allowed to be built on the, I don't know if anybody noticed that on that easement that. Like literally the whole. Yeah.
Well, what do you think, members? Do you want Anna and staff to have a, have a go at an E L that gets at some of those things? Does it look better to react to something than to try to come up with pieces?
I like that rather than trying to pitch it all into something else.
I agree. And you think there's probably more than one. There's more than one piece to the, it might be four or five items that really should be key to.
Well, and it would put those documents firmly in.
And.
Administration.
Yeah, no, it's. Yeah.
Floating around the ether.
Yeah, I can. And that's a good plan.
Well, we did what we set out to do tonight. And it's only eight fifteen.
Stacy doesn't wanna cut you loose early. She's.
Well, I was expecting to be here a lot longer. Uh, so is, is there anything else that we do need to talk about tonight? Or check off the quick list or things like that? It doesn't still feel right to go live with everything in October then. It's kind of full circle back to where we started tonight.
Yeah, I actually feel pretty comfortable. I mean, the thing about our first meeting, how we stopped it every. Thing, sentence and period economy. Now we're reading it more fluently. It's going, making sense. It ties, we see where it ties back into other parts of the book.
I think the. Trepidation that I would have is I look at that book and we haven't had been able to turn one page up. And I look at the quadrants of documents with, oh, God.
You're reminding me.
That is the manual from our unit of government's going to work. And outside of Tim, I don't think any of us have. Read it.
Well, we have just.
It's just a combination of all the things that you've read. We'll have, we'll update it again, but I think. Our next meeting.
Narrated.
Is there, is there a homework or a task with the summit with this one?
I. I think our next meeting is the twenty fourth and it's to go through this.
Yes.
Finder. Now, if you're gonna find, I think council should look through it and leave it on there. I think once we start going, you're like, oh, I've seen that. Seen that, I've seen that. Like, a lot of it is just us putting it all in one spot. So, but I think if they can look through it.
Right, so similar to what you're done with looking at the template policies that we put together, look this through ahead of time. Cause it's gonna save time at that meeting.
Yes.
If you come into it prepared. Besides, it's good discipline for when you start looking at those monitoring reports. All this one's yours.
Do you want it?
No, I go on to. I'm very excited.
I need to take Tim's back with. You will see Kaya's. Tightening tensions. Um, but yeah, we could look through it. A lot of the stuff we've. Um, but yeah, we could look through it. A lot of the stuff we've already, it's documents or, but like the procedural guides in here, that's. A one of them that we wanna look at, which has a bunch of appendixes, the council calendar, like all of those types of documents that. We've talked about as a part of our processes, but they've not actually been able to physically look at what that document will look like. And so. The self-assessment form and the meeting assessment form are minimal.
Yeah.
Like all of those, not necessarily items that are gonna require like a formal approval. But when we activate, they're gonna go live with all of this, and so we wanna make sure that. They have an understanding of how that pulls together.
Well. That looks like some happy reading, does it? I'm really excited.
I'm just so impressed with the. Tabs.
He enjoyed it a little bit too much, I think. We love it for it.
What are the odds you read every sentence in that?
Seeing like a during a flight, it's like a Gary on itself.
You could stop for sure.
Too bad that he'll come with shoulder straps.
Yeah.
Tom drive somebody.
Everybody's color coding is the same. If you're wondering.
So we can reference it by color, then?
If the tab and handwriting, the right one.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn for a second.
Alabama.